All right, good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbet?
Present.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Havas. Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us, let me just briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief summary of the case. We ask the appellant to step up to the podium and the microphone. You want to make sure you speak very close to the microphone in order for us to hear you. State your name and address for the record, and then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then the city will make a recommendation. You will have an opportunity to speak after that recommendation. Then we will turn it over to the public to... If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that case, that would be their opportunity to step forward, to address the board with their comments. Then we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board to discuss and make a decision. Then we'll move on to the next case. Okay? And I'll lead the appellate through this process as we go through. Will the city call the first case, please?
Case number 2432. The appellant, Yuri Freemark, representing the owner Larry Freemark, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To construct a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and convert the existing attached garage to living space with a non-conforming front yard setback (35.5 feet proposed, 40 feet required), and a non-conforming side yard setback abutting a street (20 feet proposed, 25 feet required). The property is located on the southeast corner of Lathrop Boulevard and Lincoln Drive between Greenfield Road and Southfield Road at 25874 Lathrop Boulevard, Section 24 Sidwell Parcel Number 762424326001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential." This appeal is to Section 5.64, Article 5, and Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi. If you'll step right up to the microphone for us. And again, state your name and address for the record, please. Right up, right up close to it. Yep, thank you.
Yuri Freemark, 25874 Lathrop Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. And can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why? And again, right up to the microphone, please.
I'm asking to construct a new attached garage to the property and convert the existing two-car garage into living space to be proposed as part of the new kitchen.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please? Stay right there.
The appellant, Yuri Freemark, representing the owner Larry Freemark, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To construct a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and convert the existing attached garage to living space with a non-conforming front yard setback (35.5 feet proposed, 40 feet required), and a non-conforming side yard setback abutting a street (20 feet proposed, 25 feet required). The property is located on the southeast corner of Lathrop Boulevard and Lincoln Drive between Greenfield Road and Southfield Road at 25874 Lathrop Boulevard, Section 24 Sidwell Parcel Number 762424326001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential." This appeal is to Section 5.64, Article 5, and Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north are single-family residential structures within the Louise-Lathrop, California Bungalow subdivision #5 of Lathrop Village. The properties to the south, east, and west are Zoned R2, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family homes in the Sherwood Forest subdivision. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one- or two-story, single-family dwellings with attached garages. A few of the properties have an attached carport. The exteriors are made of mostly brick and siding. The construction of the surrounding properties ranges from approximately 1,200 square feet to 2,500 square feet. The surrounding properties are mostly legal conforming and setback and lot coverage requirements. The subject property is a corner lot that was built in 1962 and is a 2,154-square-foot, one-story ranch-style, single-family residence with basement and a 460-square-foot attached garage. The variance request is to construct a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and convert the existing attached garage to living space with a non-conforming front yard setback (35.5 feet proposed, 40 feet required), and a non-conforming side yard setback abutting a street (20 feet proposed, 25 feet required).
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Are there any other facts you would like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Will the city provide the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration to construct a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and convert the existing attached garage to living space with a non-conforming front yard setback (35.5 feet proposed, 40 feet required), and a non-conforming side yard setback abutting a street (20 feet proposed, 25 feet required), as requested with the following conditions: One, the appellant secures all the required permits and inspections from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following: The proposed construction of a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and converting the existing attached garage to living space is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed reduction of the front yard setback and side yard setback abutting a street for, in addition to an existing house, is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties. The proposed construction of a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and converting the existing attached garage to living space is below the maximum lot coverage.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. If you want to have a seat in the front row, we may have questions for you. So this is the time for public comment on this case. If you are here to speak to the case, now would be your opportunity to step forward to be heard by the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I agree with the city's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbet?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay. I agree. I think it's a minimal request, and we're starting to see this often, actually, the transition of a garage into living space. So, let's see. Ms. Libbet, will you make a motion for us?
I move the appellant has requested to construct a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and convert the existing attached garage to living space with non-conforming front yard setback (35.5 feet proposed, 40 feet required), and a non-conforming side yard setback abutting a street (20 feet proposed, 25 feet required). The property is located on the southeast corner of Lathrop Boulevard and Lincoln Drive between Greenfield Road and Southfield Road at 25874 Lathrop Boulevard, Section 24 Sidwell Parcel Number 762424326007, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. I move that the appellant's request is approved as long as he secures all the required permits and inspections from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following: The proposed construction of a new attached garage to an existing single-family residence and converting the existing attached garage to living space is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. The proposed reduction of the front yard setback and side yard setback abutting a street for, in addition to an existing house, is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties. The proposed construction of a new attached garage to an existing single-family resident and converting the existing attached garage to living space is below the maximum lot coverage.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make one correction. The last digit of the parcel number you read is 1, not 7. So just 001.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted. Again, continue to work with the building department on your permits. Okay, thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 24-33. The appellant, Metro Signs and Lighting, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver of wall sign area, 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23659 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762425401018, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.59, 1C, more commonly known as a sign ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi there. If you could step to the microphone, please, and we'll just ask you both to introduce yourselves with your address.
Good evening, members of the ZBA. Thank you for allowing us to present our case. My name is Richie Atto, and my address is 2150 Franklin in Bloomfield Township. And tonight is Mr. Fred Nager, he's the owner of the properties here, along with Keith Messias from the Nager Companies, as well as Molly from the DDA.
Okay, I think we need... I need you to speak either a little bit louder or a little slower.
Okay. I'll speak slower. And Paul is with us from Metro Sign to discuss the technicalities of the sign.
Okay.
I'm actually excited to talk about this property because 28 years ago, I stood right here, same spot, same room, in front of the city council when we asked for approval for this property. And Honorable Sid Lance was the council chairperson at the time, and Steve Hureit, who I remember putting signs up for him when he first ran in the '70s with my dad when I was about 11 years old. So it's nice to be able to talk about a project that we started and constructed, and through the years it was successful, but obviously the Kroger store moved on to another location. The building was vacant for probably three or four years, I don't even remember, and now we have some new tenants coming in. And Five Below is the first tenant to come here to ask for our variance. And it sounds like a big giant request because the allowable square footage is 141 and whatever the number is, but the reality is, is it's almost, not quite, but it's almost a technicality because the actual square footage of the sign, of the letters of the sign, is only one foot more than that's allowed, but because the blue background is included, that's why it appears to be such a large variance. But it is a very large building, so it's in scale. It's actually aesthetically pleasing, and if the blue was considered an architectural feature, we probably wouldn't even be here, but I'm glad we're here to see you. Excuse me. So, we respectfully request the variance. The building sits several hundred feet away from the road, and it's a great tenant to have in the building, along with the others that are coming along, and we respectfully request a variance. And Mr. Paul, his last name, Paul Dieters is here if we have any technical questions about the sign itself.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Perfect, thank you. We'll let him introduce himself, just so you're on the record, please.
Pardon me?
I'd like him to introduce himself and address so that he's on the record.
Good evening. My name is Paul Dieters. I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Colts Avenue in Warren.
Great, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add at this point?
Well, I'll wait until the city presents its findings, and we'll address any technical issues from that point.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Metro Signs and Lighting, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver of wall sign area, 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23659 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762425401018, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 859, 1C, more commonly known as a sign ordinance. Correction, Section 8.59, 1C, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23659 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 262425401018, Zoned B3, General Business District. The properties to the north are Zoned RT. The west portion of this RT-zoned area is part of the adjacent high-rise residential property parcel to the west, Zoned RMU. This area has a walking path and a designated outdoor cooking/dining area that is accessible from the adjacent high-rise residential property, RMU, to the west. The east portion of this RT-zoned area is located at the southwest corner of Mount Vernon Street and Greenfield Road. This vacant property is owned by the City of Southfield and is landscaped with small trees and/or bushes. The properties to the south are Zoned RMM, Multiple Family Residential District Medium Rise, and B3, General Business District. The Village at Cornerstone, a residential townhouse community, is located within the RMM Multiple Family Residential Medium Rise District to the south. There are also several existing businesses within the B3, General Business District, that is located to the south, including a single-story, multi-tenant building, as well as an outback steakhouse restaurant with a dining room. The properties to the east are located within the City of Royal... Correction, the City of Oak Park, along with east... along the east side of Greenfield Road. These properties appear to be single-family residential properties. The subject property is approximately 11,690 square feet and is the southernmost tenant space within an approximately 65,000-square-foot commercial building. The subject property is currently under construction and is the future location of a Five Below retail store. The storefrontage for Five Below is approximately 70 feet, point eight... 70 feet, eight inches linear feet. In the general business B3 district, the following wall signs are permitted. Wall signs are permitted, providing the following conditions are met: Wall signs, except for plazas, may only be placed on a building facade fronting a major thoroughfare, provided that, with respect to a plaza, wall signs may be placed on individual tenant building space which faces the parking lot. Wall signs shall be limited to one per tenant. The total area of such signs shall not exceed two square feet per linear foot of tenant footage or 200 square feet, whichever is less. The appellant, Metro Signs and Lighting, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver of wall sign area, 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
Well, I'd just say Mr. Atto did a nice job explaining everything, and I think you could... I'd hope the board would see here, you've got a beautiful building. Five Below certainly wants... doesn't want to do anything to detract from that, and I think, hopefully, the board would see is this feature, the blue band behind that really just makes it easier to see, more legible, and it's more aesthetically pleasing. I think it would be an enhancement, and just due to the size of that building, it's really in line and in scale with what would probably be appropriate for that size storefront. And as we had stated previously, the lettering is just one or two square feet over what would be allowed. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for waiver of wall sign area, 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet, as requested, with the following conditions: The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. Favorable consideration to approve the variance is based on the following: In the general business B3 district, the following wall signs are permitted. The proposed wall signs would face the parking lot. The proposed wall sign would be facing a major thoroughfare. One wall sign is permitted per tenant. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we will open public comment on this case. If you're here to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Molly Lalone, the executive director for the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. My address is 18,000 West Nine Mile. I've been here for a year. Very nice to meet you all. I haven't met you yet, but very nice to meet you. I am excited about this project. This is just north of Northland City Center, which is the redevelopment project for the Northland Mall, and it's also just north of where the Costco has just been opened, also a year ago. It's also just north of Henry Ford Health Systems, Providence Hospital, which is the major employer in Southfield. The investment in this property is exciting. When I saw all the semis come in with all of their equipment, and they're getting right at... going to work right now, making the changes immediately, it causes excitement. And that shopping mall is on the north edge of Southfield Historic Cornerstone District, the southeast corner of Southfield, and I appreciate your attention to these details. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this case? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Okay, Mr. Jenkins?
I support.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I support it as well.
Okay, and Ms. Libbet?
I support it. Could we have a repetition of the Sidwell parcel for the record?
Yeah.
He said 2... Yeah, he said 26.
Okay, so we'll get it in the motion. How about that? Is that okay? We'll make sure we read it correctly in the motion?
That's fine.
Okay. I did just have two questions. Just sometimes when we're looking at these larger plazas, will this... will Five Below have signage on the... on a ground sign or on another sign?
Yes, the existing... we have two existing ground signs, and the three new tenants, which is Five Below, Ross and Burlington, each will have a position on one of the two ground signs.
Okay, and... okay, so the old Kroger space is being divided into three tenants?
Precisely.
Got it. Okay, that was my second question. Perfect, thank you. I support it, I just was just curious. Okay, so let's see. Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us with the accurate parcel number, please?
In regards to ZBA case 24-33, the appellant, Metro Signs and Lighting, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver of wall sign area, 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet. Property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23659 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762425401018, Zoned B3, General I make a motion to support this variance for a waiver of wall sign area for 266.06 square feet proposed, 141 square feet permitted, a variance of 125.06 square feet, as requested with the following conditions: That the appellant secures all the required permits and inspections received and receives final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. I make this motion due to the extraordinary and exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted. Again, please continue to work with the building department on your permits. Okay, thank you very much. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 24-34. The appellant, Donna Holkey, from Inner City Neon, representing the owner, Southfield Industrial Park LLC, Jamal Garmo, member, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver of wall sign area, 210.5 square feet proposed, 100 square feet permitted, a variance of 110.5 square feet. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Eight Mile Road and Nine Mile Road at 21321 Telegraph Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762432400033, Zoned I1 Industrial District.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant... Oh, I'm sorry.
This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 12, Section 8.61, 1B, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes.
You thought you could get rid of me that easy. Once again, my name is Richie Atto. Thank you for allowing us to present our case, and with me is Donna Holkey with Inner City Neon. Again, I came here in front of the planning commission a few years ago with the owner of the property, Mr. Garmo of the Southfield Industrial. Forgive me for using the B-word, but the property was somewhat blighted, and Mr. Garmo elected to invest a lot of money in the city, in the southern part of the city there, and tore down the existing building that was there. Actually, we just finished the demolition within the past 30 days or so, and built this three-story building that has 210 feet of frontage on Telegraph. And to not just have, you know, another storage building, because there's several in Southfield, he decided to make it into a mixed-use building, so there's a retail component as well, as well as his own offices. He's going to occupy the building for his operations for this business and other businesses. So because the building is such a large building and has so much frontage, and it's set back several hundred feet, and the reason for that is because he plans to develop some more retail in front of it, in addition to the retail that's in this building. And... And the hundred square foot maximum is just, it's just not proportionate to the size of the building. So we respectfully request a variance for that. And hopefully you could agree that it's a duly necessary item for this large of a building that far from the road and with over 200 feet of frontage. And the storage, the sign is for the storage. Obviously, other retail tenants will have their own sign and they'll be allowed whatever they're allowed for the square footage, but 80 or 90 percent of the building is storage and the sign is necessary to identify it. And then here's Donna to introduce herself.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Donna Holkey with Inner City Neon, 23920 Amber in Warren.
Okay, thank you. Who would like, do you have anything to add to what he said?
No, no.
Okay, sounds good. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Donna Holkey, from Inner City Neon, representing the owner, Southfield Industrial Park LLC, Jamal Garmo, member, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver of wall sign area, 210.5 square feet proposed, 100 square feet permitted, a variance of 110.5 square feet. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Eight Mile Road and Nine Mile Road at 21321 Telegraph Road, Sidwell parcel number 762432400033, zoned I1 Industrial District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 12, Section 8.61, 1B, more commonly known as the signed ordinance. The property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Eight Mile Road and Nine Mile Road at 21321 Telegraph Road, Sidwell parcel number 762432400033, zoned I1 Industrial District. The properties to the north are zoned I1 Industrial District with existing buildings. The properties to the south are zoned I1 Industrial District with existing buildings. The properties to the east are zoned I1 Industrial District and are part of Supervisor's Platte Number 11 of Southfield and are located along the east side of Telegraph Road, a major thoroughfare. The properties to the west are zoned IL, Light Industrial, and are part of the Bridge Street Industrial Park Sub, which is accessible from Bridge Street at Eight Mile Road. The subject property is a newly constructed three-story building designed for mixed use, including storage at all three levels, residential and business use at the second level, and future business and mercantile use at the main level. The subject property is an approximately 132,000 square foot building. The total linear foot frontage of the building is approximately 220 feet. In the I1 Industrial District, the following signs are permitted. Wall signs, provided that the following conditions are met. Each tenant of a development may have only one wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage. The total area of the sign should not exceed one square foot per linear foot of tenant frontage or exceed an area of 100 square feet, whichever is less. The appellant, Donna Holkey, from Inner City Neon, representing the owner, Southfield Industrial Park LLC, Jamal Garmo, member, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver of wall sign area, 210.5 square feet proposed, 100 square feet permitted, a variance of 110.5 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for waiver of wall sign area as requested with the following conditions. The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections, receives final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. Favorable consideration to approve the variance is based on the following. Each tenant of a development may have only one wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage. The proposed wall sign would face the parking lot and the proposed wall sign would be facing a major thoroughfare. One wall sign is permitted. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, okay, sounds good. We'll open public comment on this case. If anyone wishes to speak to this case, now is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I just have one question. How many residential units do you have planned for this building?
Oh, the reason that residential was mentioned is because there's just one unit so that if a security person could be able to stay there overnight. So we, when we originally applied for the approval, it was for one single apartment for security purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
I have no problem with this.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
No issues with it.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so the one question I have, and this is maybe, maybe for the city. I'm assuming that that kind of bottom row has like the word tenant, or retail, I'm sorry, retail above each of those doors. So I'm assuming at some point there's going to be a request for wall signs for each of these retail units. This request before us says one wall sign. So if they were to come forward and ask for tenant signage, would they be granted it or would it be prohibited due to the fact that the request we are approving is for one wall sign? Multiple places, it says one wall sign, only one wall sign.
At this time, there's only one wall sign, so I won't speculate regarding that, although I'm expecting that there would be additional signage. Where that will be, we don't know yet, although he will have reach on the first floor. But I believe, per Mr. Atto's comments, there will be other developments there in front, potentially. So where they actually put them, I don't know, until we see. We haven't seen anything submitted. It's proposed for retail approximately seven or eight units along the main level.
Right.
But I don't, I don't have that answer for you.
Right, I mean, multiple places, it says tenants are allowed one sign.
They're, so each tenant would be allowed one sign, so as long as the other ones don't go over
Their size.
Their size, they would be, they wouldn't need a waiver for those. This is the, our waiver for the one tenant to have a larger than.
So...
Okay, I just, I mean, I want to, like, if we need to approve additional wall signage.
That would only be if those signs are larger than they'd be allowed per tenant.
Which would be like 10 feet or something, 10 feet, 20 feet, square feet or something.
I think it's...
Just by example...
Their frontage, yeah, because it's 200 feet long.
It's practically 220 feet in length along Telegraph. So divided by eight roughly, one area may be larger.
Yeah, they look pretty equal, but, so I just wanted to, I guess, address it, otherwise you may have to come back with another side case.
I wanted to address it too, so when we made this application, I actually talked to Mike and he had me talk to Marvin, and I said, if we go to the zoning board of appeals, I just want to be clear that other individual tenants that have, that the spaces are divided into 20-foot sections, but that doesn't mean if you wanted to rent it, you needed a 30-foot. So he said, no, every tenant is allowed is one square feet per linear foot, so...
Two, I think two, right, or no, it is one in this district, because it's an industrial, okay.
So for example, if the N store was a phone store, they could, if they took 20-foot space by 50, it's 1,000 square feet, they could have a 20-square-foot sign. If they took two spaces, they could have a 40-square-foot sign. They would only come here if the two spaces and they wanted to build a 50-square-foot sign, then they would need to request a variance for the additional 10-foot.
I just want to be on the record, making sure we all agree, because that's not what I'm reading.
I want to be on the record too, because that's what I was told, and I want to be sure that, so part of the building that's going to operate, the storage, like, people aren't going to go upstairs to rent a space. So they're going to come to the first, the first four stores on the very south end
Right.
are going to be where you
Enter for storage.
Come in and say, I'd like to rent a space. But there's also plans to put a UPS store within that store. So UPS will come in and say, we want to put a sign that says the UPS store.
Right.
Which is another good thing for the building, because it's a national tenant and they've approved the spot and we're going down the pathway to get that going too. So UPS, maybe whoever else, whether it's a nail salon, a hair salon, everybody will apply for their own sign. And they'll all be at the lower band, and the only sign that's going to be up on top is the one that we're talking about tonight.
So Madam Chairperson, I believe there could be up to eight or nine total signs. The storage facility itself is the length of the building, because it's all-inclusive. So the other ones would be smaller based on the one linear foot per frontage.
The other thing, just to be clear, so the building's 220-foot wide. So there's 11 spaces, possible spaces. The first four are taken by the operations in the UPS store. So there could be as many as seven, but if somebody takes two, it could be, so it can add exceed seven because there's only seven spaces left. So it could be seven or less if more than one are combined.
Okay, I agree with that. I just want to make sure everybody agrees with that. Okay.
I agree with you that you want everybody to agree with it.
Good, okay. Mr. Friedman, will you make the motion for us?
Sure. The appellant, Donna Holkey, from Inner City Neon, representing the owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver of wall sign area, 210.5 square feet proposed, 100 square feet permitted, a variance of 110 square feet. Property is located on the west side of Telegraph Road between Eight Mile Road and Nine Mile Road at 21321 Telegraph Road, Sidwell parcel 762432400033, zoned I1 Industrial District. I move that we approve the waiver of wall sign area, 110, 110.5 square feet, with the condition that the appellant secure all the required permits and inspections from the city. And I make this recommendation because, I make this proposal because the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning regulations and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would have an adverse or detrimental effect upon the surrounding properties. And it would not be, would not interfere or be objectionable from the point of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Again, continue to work with the building department on your permits.
Thank you again to the board, but also to the dedicated knowledgeable staff in the building department.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so that closes our public hearing, and we do have two sets of minutes. So first, we can look at the November 19th minutes. Did anyone have any changes?
Move approval as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, great, the minutes are approved for the November 19th meeting and December 3rd. Any concerns, changes, corrections? Okay, can I have a motion to approve? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Next up, looks like there's a request from staff to cancel our next meeting on February 4th. So we're going to have a motion to cancel due to cases.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, and then we currently have one case for February 18th. Would that, do you expect that to continue if we only have one case or postpone?
So I actually just found out today that case probably won't be on the 18th. They have seven lots they need to combine before next week's deadline, and Planning just notified me of that today.
Oh, okay.
It may have been yesterday. So more than likely, we won't have a meeting on the 18th unless I get two cases in through this week.
Okay, so you'll let us know?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone have any miscellaneous? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And we are adjourned.